Last one of the year. Please join me for the pledge.
The United States of America, to the republic through which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. So who'd have thought at the beginning of the year we'd still be doing Zoom meetings at the end? But here we are. Hope everyone's staying safe out there. Into the holidays. Go with the standard. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the government's executive order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting by video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There's been a roll call. Well, there will be. Let me do that now. There'll be a roll call of the board members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting. I see everybody out there. Let me do the roll call first. Peter?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
And Joan?
Here.
Okay. We have a full board of seven members, and the alternate is not needed tonight for voting. And there has been a roll call of the board members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. All right. Out of the way, the first one up is Fox Run at Fulton, Building A, amended site plan. Kelly, I saw out there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. This is Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates, and I am just going to summarize the changes that we made. If everyone recalls at the last planning board meeting, we were reviewing a modification to the last building at Fox Run. The first two buildings have already been built and completed, the last building being Building A. The reason for the change in this building was, again, because we had purchased the two properties owned by collectively the Avello Brothers, Avello Paving Property, and were able to make some modifications to the parking and the building configuration. Since the last meeting, in response to the comments that were raised by the planning board and its consultants, most notably, we received the variance application from the ZPA, which was required for the addition of the fifth floor. Again, as a reminder, the overall height of the building hasn't changed, just a modification to the use of the westerly side of the building for seven residential units, so habitable space on a fifth floor. In addition, we had provided you with some of the illustrations for the proposed lighting on the roof deck, some noise attenuation on the roof deck, being the installation of a green barrier on the north side, which is the side facing Fulton Street. We pulled the pavers back that are on the lower level of the building that's on the westerly side of the property back, so they were outside of the setback criteria, although the setback criteria, or sorry, out of the open space. And noted that the setback criteria didn't apply to the patios because they're considered pavers and considered landscaping. We removed nine parking spaces, which if those who were on the board previous to now recall, there was a parking lot that we called the Uber Lot or the UPS FedEx drop-off delivery lot that we had created that facilitated access to the property outside of the gated entrance, and it was ease of access for deliveries. We did eliminate that parking lot and reduce the overall impervious space and increase the overall open space as a result of the proposal. I believe that that represents all of the amendments that we had made, and I'm happy to share my screen or to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Eric?
Yeah. Let's see. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Perfect.
Great. So the staff felt that the application is ready for, if the board's inclined, for a approval of the amended plan and has prepared a draft negative declaration and a resolution to that effect. I guess issues for the board, the zoning board did approve the variance on Monday. The only discussion items, I guess, would be to, if you have any further questions about the roof terrace information, also just be reminded that the applicant discussed architecture with you at the last meeting, which was not contained in the submittal for tonight, but you have seen that. And I think that's pretty much it.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Don, do you have any comments at this time for drainage?
Yeah, I can, I can address the county's letter, because our feeling is that this would be an issue between the county and the property owner if it ever became an issue because they do have a level spreader, and they have shown in the past that there's no increase in the, in the peak drainage coming off the site. So with that in mind, you know, we're, we're ready to say that it's fine.
Okay. Thanks. And I noticed they have, you know, reduced the impervious, so we don't need the amended SWIP as well.
Correct. This is Eric again. The, just today, the county, county planning department responded to a general municipal law referral for the site, amended site plan, and they recommended that the planning board, they had a recommendation. Often, they, they just have comments for the board's consideration, and in this case, their recommendation was that the board address the county planning, Department of Public Works's concerns to their satisfaction. So it, it sounds from the engineer like those drainage issues may be addressed, so the board can either add that condition to its conditions of approval, or it can, if it, it would, if it had a super majority, then the planning board could override the county's recommendation and on the basis if it felt that the explanation of drainage had been provided satisfactory to the county planning department's concerns.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. Yeah, we want to make sure that the drainage is okay for the rail trail. Don sounds like he's looked it over. All right. This is on for public hearing, so I, I move the open and public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, seven to zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight that wishes to comment on this project? Remember, star six to unmute if you're on the phone. Or star nine to raise your hand. Yep, star nine to raise your hand, and then obviously if you're on your computer, those items are usually found at the bottom of the screen. I am not seeing any raised hands. All right. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. All right. Let's go around the board for comments. Peter?
The only comment I, I have is that it was a, the letter we received from the county DPW was pretty strongly worded, so I think it would be sensible just to add that condition to the, to the approval, just that the applicant does satisfy the county DPW's concerns.
Sounds like it's close to, it may be satisfied, but we.
Yeah.
Take a look at it. All right.
We have no objection, objection to that, Mr. Chairman. We have no objection to that. We, we feel confident that we can address that issue.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. Let's go to Ben.
Peter's comment is the only one I had also, but that's taken care of. Thank you.
All right. Nicole?
Uh, nothing. Yeah, this is, this was the only thing I think that we were wondering about.
All right. Bob?
Yeah, the, the plan is now that's going to be five stories in Building A, right?
Yes.
And the diagrams we got still show it as four. Do you want to update that?
Well, the, the fifth story is just the, some bedrooms were added to the basement.
Yeah, it's just the basement. That's why.
Okay.
Yeah.
The building hasn't gone up yet at all.
All right. And I have nothing else.
It's built into the hill a little bit, so the, so one side of the basement has some, some rooms on it now.
Okay.
All right. Rocco?
I think Bob's noticing maybe that the, the label on the site plan still says four stories. Maybe that's confusing.
Okay. Yeah, you got it. Clean up the paperwork, Kelly.
So that can be cleaned up.
Uh, Rocco?
Uh, yeah, I go along with adding a comment that to satisfy the county regarding the drainage and, and the rail trail. They also had a second issue in there, which I don't, I'm not sure is really an issue. The major driveway alignment with Sunset, is that's, isn't that pretty much where it's aligned?
Well, it's, it's not aligned with it directly right now, but that's the main entrance to the whole site that they weren't proposing to change.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I just, I thought that that was pretty close anyway.
I suspect that county planning may not realize that that is in existence already because this is the first time they're actually looking at the plans and.
Possibly.
Have the plans to see. So I suspect that that's why that comment is in there.
Okay.
As we said, it's an existing driveway, and I don't think the board feels the need to move it.
No. Yeah. Pretty close anyway. All right. Those, that's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Unless you want to make a tunnel through Building A there, Kelly, to.
I'm sorry?
Unless you want to make a tunnel through Building A to move the entrance.
Yeah, I think, I don't think so. And I know that issue was got, raised by this board, you know, the alignment with Sunset. And if you remember, we went through at length. We actually had it at Sunset, and we moved, moved it back and forth and back and forth. So this was the ultimate location after the three different traffic consultants, I think, reviewed the project.
Ah, okay. Yeah, that was a while ago.
Yes.
Thanks for the history. Let's see. Joan, did you have comments yet?
I did. I just wanted to check with Eric to confirm that we were okay with the level of lighting on the rooftop terrace. I know we have to strike a balance between too much lighting and not enough. It seemed a little scant, but I know that's probably intentional to, to create an ambiance, but do you think it's sufficient for safety purposes?
The, there was, the lighting information provided consisted of.
Hard to hear you now, Eric.
What? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. The lighting provided consisted of sample illustrations of the kinds of lighting that would be provided on the roof, and the roof layout, it, it indicated strings of lights. There was no detailed light information provided. From the sample illustrations, it looked like it was all downlighting, as in the soffits from the, the elevator structure, which are downwardly directed, and insets in furniture and then the plants, which all seemed to be pretty low level. So it, it didn't strike me as any great concern, but ultimately, it's up to the board. If you want to see, you could, you could either leave it as is, or you could request as a condition that details be provided to the satisfaction of the department. Either way.
Yeah. I guess, I was just concerned about the lighting because the railing is so close to the edge of the building, but I understand that at each railing spot, there is downlit lighting, so it, you know, should alert somebody that there's, you know, the edge of the space there. Does anybody else have any? Is everybody satisfied with the sufficiency of the lighting on the roof? No one else has any issues with that?
Yeah, I mean, the fire department did have some comments about that, but I'm assuming that Kelly will get with them and.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out exactly, you know, what, what they want as far as safety is concerned on lighting up there, so.
Okay. Yeah, as long as that there's going to be some collaboration to ensure that it's not too much, but not too little either. And that was really my only concern.
And we were trying to avoid having.
Have them show the locations, you could do that.
Yeah, I think that would be probably a good idea because it looks like one section of the area doesn't have any strong lights. It's all reliant on the downlit. So, which I understand, you know, you want it to be sort of cozy and, I can't think of the right word, but, you know, just since it is a rooftop space with the railing so close to the edge.
Yeah, you want, you want some.
We can provide the location of the lighting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
And, and just on the fire department's comments, also, I just wanted to let you know that the chief, the fire chief did call me. We did discuss his comments. He said that he was going to, to note those. With respect to the railing, I did tell him that the railing obviously needs to be code compliant. If he had any further restrictions that he wanted over and above the building code, we would certainly entertain those. And we're very, you know, we do communicate quite a bit with the fire department, so I told him that I would reach out to him if there were any other issues that he had after we had started construction.
Okay, great. Yeah, they look pretty sturdy in the picture that was provided, for sure.
Yeah, I think it benefits us to make sure that they're.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Hey, Kelly, this is, since the board raised that point, could you just address for them, I had noticed in the roof layout that the railing is along a part of the, the side that faces the rail trail, but then the rest of it is just the edge of the building, and it's not entirely clear what's there. Is it, is it a railing atop the parapet, or is the parapet above the decking or something else?
It's a parapet, and then the railing is on the inside of the parapet. So what maybe would be useful, Eric, is I can just provide a detail of that looking, we have it in plan view, but we can show it in an elevation view of blow up, so you can see the detail there. And then you'll have that for the, you know, final approval or final submission, or, um, final signature.
Okay.
So we'll provide you with a detail showing the location of the lighting, and we'll provide you with a blow up, a section across the roof in that area, so you can understand the railing attachment and what that will look like.
Any other comments, Joan?
Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, I'll echo that. Looking at the lighting renderings here, it looks nice. You can do a lot with the LED strips these days under the benches and such to, to keep the lighting down low, because we're trying to avoid lighting up the neighbors as well to keep the dark sky. So we'll do that as a condition if that, if you review that with the department for final. And I like that you've added, the green wall looks nice. That, I think that helps satisfy the issues we had with the noise and lighting spillage to the houses to the north there.
I think it serves two purposes, Mr. Chairman. One was the noise, and two is just it adds a green component, but three, the fire department had raised issues regarding someone were throwing something over the, the railing, which of course, I, I can't really respond to it. I don't know how to address that, other than the fact that that wall is five feet, and I think that they had reviewed the plan prior to seeing that green wall, and that should address, I think, most of their concerns.
Okay. Thanks. Well, I'm good with that at this point. I would add the conditions to our motion of, of the satisfying the DPW for drainage and just the review of the lighting with the department. Any other conditions from board members that I missed?
What was that last one you said?
To add the, review, review of the lighting, the rooftop lighting plan with the department just to.
And just the section of the railing as well. There were three. So add the condition of, we'll coordinate with DPW, show the location of the lighting on the roof, and then add a rail section.
And then a rail sec, section to. Sounds good. Thanks, Kelly. All right. Ready for a motion then? Nicole?
I move that the planning board grant, oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I move that the planning board has determined to, to conduct an uncoordinated review of the Fox Run at Fulton Building A site plan as amended October 26, 2020 through December 17, 2020, AKA Fox Run at Fulton Second Amended Site Plan, AKA Fairview Commons, and finds that the action would not have significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December 17, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Fox Run at Fulton Building A amended site plan, AKA Fox Run at Fulton Second Amended Site Plan, AKA Fairview Commons, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of the following, one through 11, nine to coordinate with DPW, 10 to review rooftop lighting, and 11 to review railing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And you did show us the architecture last time. Does anybody have any comments on the architecture from last meeting?
No.
I recall we went around the room. So I move that we approve the architecture for Building A as, as presented in our last meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben? Oh, Ben had to step out, I think. Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone has a good holiday. Yeah, have a great holiday, and hopefully we have a great new year.
You too.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care, everyone.
Good luck with the, good luck with the project, and stay safe.
Thank you.
Next up is Mazda expansion at 2309 Route 9. Who's, um, representing that tonight?
Good evening. This is Chris Lapine with the Chazin Companies.
Hey, Chris, how are you?
Good. Yourself?
Good.
With me this evening, I also have their counsel, Nick Ward-Willis of Keenan Bean.
All right.
Good evening.
So what's, uh, what's happening with it?
So as you recall, we, we appeared before your planning board in November of 2019, yeah, at which time we received both conditional site plan and special approval to expand the existing Mazda Route 9 motor vehicle sales and service facility by 7,500 square feet approximately for the building expansion.
Yep.
And also an additional parking lot to the south of it to accommodate their new inventory in parking, in new inventory and used cars parking needs. We obtained a extension on our approval in October of this year, as the applicant has still been working to resolve the revised access easements with Country Club Apartments. If you recall, they have three access points along Anthony Drive, which, existing access points which are subject to previous easements that were established with the Country Club Apartments facility. The applicant at this time has been unable to resolve the new access easements, and as part of the, not only resolve the access easements, they were also looking for the ability to install the landscaping between the Mazda facility and Anthony Drive. There were some trees that were proposed. They haven't been able to come to terms with Country Club Apartments on that. We thought we were making a decent progress until last October. So therefore, what the Mazda's proposing to do at this time is utilize their existing easternmost access point and westernmost access point. The easternmost access point was going to be converted to a right turn in, right turn out only. Since our last meeting, we would like to now make that a right turn out only and not allow any access.
Yep.
At the easternmost portion of the property due to its close proximity to the light at the intersection with Route 9. The westernmost access, we would like to preserve in its current state, and as I indicated right now, due to our inability to reach an agreement with Country Club Apartments, we are proposing to eliminate the landscaping between the right of way of Anthony Drive and the rechaining wall that was being installed at Mazda. What we would like to do in lieu of that, because we think that landscaping is important from an aesthetic standpoint, is the owner of Mazda, the applicant has indicated he'd be willing to place a note on the plans or even provide an escrow to guarantee that he would install the landscaping in the future if there can be an agreement with Country Club can be established, or if at one point in time, Country Club Apartments comes before the town for an approval, and that this can be in a condition of their approval to allow Mazda to install the landscaping as contemplated in our original approval. Lastly, we added some additional signage to our site plan, just for clarifications as to all trailers, delivery trucks, and refuse vehicles are to be using the Route 9 access at this time, and we are seeking a, an amended site plan approval for these four amendments in order to move forward and finalize our site plan and consolidate the two lots.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Hey, it's a shame that that can't line up to drive, the drive-in the way you had it, but hopefully they can still work on negotiations. See, Don, do you have any issues from an engineering standpoint with this?
Sorry. I just, the only thing we have is, we still have some SWIP comments left, but there's really nothing of any consequence.
All right. Thanks. All right. Eric, what's your recommendation?
Well, I will, you have the staff recommendation, and then I think I'm going to ask the attorney to address some recent, after that, I'll ask the attorney to address some recent correspondence. The recommendation was to, that the board, if it felt that the amendment to the access, eliminating the, or revising the access in Anthony Drive back to what it is existing rather than as previously approved, we thought that was reasonable, subject to a few conditions, and we had invited the board to consider the terms of future landscaping and that it's, that the applicant offered in the event, changes to the easement could be worked out with the applicant. So those still remain up for planning board discussion and action if it chooses. However, before you do that, we did get some correspondence today that I think the planning board attorney should address.
All right.
Lisa, are you there?
I am here. Thank you. And so Nick Ward-Willis is on the phone. One of the letters that came in today was from Nick. The other letter was from counsel for Mazda, I'm sorry, counsel for Country Club Apartments. The assertion by Country Club Apartments now is that since the acquisition of the new property, it, the Country Club Apartments position is that, that. it, the Country Club Apartments' position is that, that, um, the, the use of Anthony Drive may be enjoined because of the addition of the new parcel. In other words, what was contemplated originally was the Mazda parcel only and now because of the addition of the extra parcel in the back, their position is that the use may be enjoined regardless of whether the easement is burdened additionally by the proposed use and the changes in the site plan. Mazda's position, and Nick will correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, um, because the proposal changes the access on Route 9 and allows the trucks to go in that way rather than Anthony Drive and other changes made to the plans, including the right turn out only, that the, at travel and the use of the Anthony Drive easement is going to be lessened and therefore the easement will be less burdened than it has been historically. Obviously, that's a dispute between those two property owners. What is before this board is the question of whether the amendment to the site plan and the special use permit is appropriate at this time. Nick has provided some case law which says that basically disputes from neighbors are not the subject of planning board consideration, which I agree with, um, up to a point. The issue here, and maybe Nick wants to respond to this directly, that I see is that someone has now called into question the continued ability to use Anthony Drive as an access point at all because of the recent acquisition of the property, which was not, um, part of the initial site plan approval. Well, I guess it was, but the property had not yet been acquired. And so that's the concern that I have with granting an approval tonight is that it may be that the access on Anthony Drive may not be able to be used by this applicant and we won't have a decision on that, um, at, until, at the present time.
I mean, they're even-
So I'm actually gonna ask, I can tell Nick wants to respond and I'm actually, with the board's permission, I would like to allow him to respond and hear his thoughts on that point.
All right, I mean, we're actually reducing, uh, one of the curb cuts as well on Anthony Drive.
Well, that, reducing the curb cut on Anthony Drive is something that can be accomplished on the applicant's property. So that is really not, doesn't affect the ingress or egress, the use of Anthony Drive as such. So the, the question is really, does the acquisition of the property, um, call into question the use by this applicant of Anthony Drive, which is a private way owned by Country Club Apartments?
Is, uh...
I'm sorry, would the board like me to respond?
Yeah, I guess, uh, before you do, I don't know if Chris wanted to say, or you, uh, is, is the Route 9 entrance, what is going to be used for the new, for truck, for car drop-offs?
Yeah, what, what, what I should share with you, and we've actually, uh, just for the board's record, we've, we've shared this with Country Club Apartments, uh, when we were originally dealing with, uh, Mr. Ken Stanger, who was representing them, and then, uh, to Al Roberts, and now it's going back to Ken Stanger again. We shared with them that, you know, uh, Mazda has, uh, approximately, uh, 130 new cars, uh, per month that are delivered off-site. They're then brought to the dealership and then back to off-site, uh, for their initial inspection. And all that takes place along Anthony Drive. They sell about 90 new vehicles a month, uh, which also, uh, is required to be placed from the, transported, you know, from the off-site storage to Mazda via Anthony Drive. Approximately 150 test drives per month, which come in via Anthony Drive. We've explained to, uh, the owners of, uh, Country Club Apartments and, uh, their rotating attorneys, uh, that these number of vehicle trips along Anthony Drive are now going to be eliminated as all these vehicles will now be brought onto the site and stored on the site.
Yep.
As opposed to coming in through Anthony Drive. Also, we explained to the, uh, attorneys of record for, uh, Country Club that the truck traffic which comes in along Anthony Drive, that would include the refuse pickup, delivery, and at times there is a car or two, will no longer be taking place along Anthony Drive. All that will now be, uh, coming in along Route 9 and exiting along Route 9. The only use of Anthony Drive will continue to be as outlined in the easement agreement for the benefit of the service vehicles and for the employees in the rear of the property, uh, for parking. With that being said, uh, I would like to now turn it over to Nick to discuss, uh, his comments regarding the legal matter.
All right.
Thank you, Chris, and, and, and good evening, board. Nick Ward-Willis with Keenan Bean, counsel for the applicant. So the actual acquisition of a property that occurred in December 2nd, I don't think changes anything because we were previously, the previously approved site plan, we were going to be merging the properties. So the only thing that has changed instead of now being owned by the prior owner, it's owned by us. The actual use of a property hasn't changed. Also, under the law, as Lisa mentioned in our, in our letter, these private disputes, the question as to, does that easement for Anthony Drive allow someone who comes onto parcel A, the existing parcel, from parcel B, are they then able to go onto Anthony Drive? That's not a question that's before this board. The courts have recognized that boards, land use boards, are addressing the zoning use, not private property disputes. We believe that the plan you have before you, which includes access both from Anthony Drive as well as Route 9, is in accord with the zoning and also is in accord with our easement rights. This objection wasn't raised back when the approval was granted initially in October 2019 by, um, the, um, Country Club Apartments, but it rather is recently raised and now in the land use context. They previously raised in the private party dispute, but I think they're grasping at straws. It's not relevant to the land use issues, the fact that we've acquired it and we're well within our rights, how we presented the plan. For example, a, a lot of the distinguishing factor from the cases that Mr. Stanger's office provided is that there really was only one point of access. Here, we have two points of access. It's not just Anthony Drive. There is prime access from Route 9, which not only is it reducing traffic on Anthony Drive, but it is our prime access onto that additional parcel. So I think the facts are different. I think we're compliant with the zoning. And as far as whether the acquisition that occurred two weeks ago changes anything, i- in my view, it doesn't because it still comes down to a interpretation between two parties as to whether we're, we're, uh, within our rights in using the easement.
All right, thanks. I mean, yeah, that kinda makes sense that the Route 9 will be the main entrance exit, even customers primarily, but anyone wanting to go northbound would try to exit onto Anthony Drive. All right. Uh, Lisa, do you have any additional comment from, follow-up to, to Nick's?
No, not at this time.
All right, um, if, Eric, what, uh... We don't have any traffic consultant with us tonight, but I guess, but the, if we were not, if they were not allowed to use any Anthony Drive, then it would only be right in and right out, going southbound on Route 9, so nobody would be able to get northbound. So that might change, that changes the whole plan a bit.
The board didn't have any, um, trip generation or, um, distribution information evaluated for this change. The applicant did provide some, um, some, some descriptive information as to the change in traffic impacts and circulation, uh, for this revised configuration. I think it's safe to say that in sum, rather than having, a- as, as Nick Ward-Willis just said, it, it doesn't change greatly from what was previously approved except that the incremental traffic coming off of, that would have come off of Anthony Drive would now come directly off of Route 9 and that, as with the previous proposal, the bulk of the traffic would access via Route 9 for the, uh, sales and storage purposes.
Uh, yes.
If I, I had, someone had asked, uh, earlier today, um, if there, the board has the action in front of it to, um, consider closing the public hearing, acting on the meg-deck and continuing. I was asked previously if, um, if the board chooses not to do that, then the course of action would be to, uh, adjourn the public hearing, and to, and then to defer the application subject to the comments.
Yep. All right, thanks, Eric. I guess I'm concerned if, you know, would the applicant, uh, be okay even if, if those exits could not be used at all and there's no, no way for customers to get northbound on Route 9 without, uh, be a business issue? So they may wanna consider, continue to negotiate there. All right, this is off for public hearings. So I move we open the public hearing for this project? Moved and seconded, called to question by roll, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight wish to comment on Mazda project? Raise your hand through the Zoom meeting or if you're on your phone, star six to unmute and star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Nick Ward-Willis. If there's no one from the public, I can be heard for a moment?
You can be included in the public hearing? Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I did hear your, your comment and, and the concern about access out Anthony Drive and that's specifically what the courts have said the planning board should not be looking at. It's a private party dispute you have before you, whether we comply with zoning, if the access is there. If they think it's not permissible, they have the rights to go to the court. Who is the proper party to decide that? It's not for the board to decide and sort of interject itself respectfully into that question. There is an easement before you. We've provided plans. It's the very same plans that were approved a year ago with showing access out Anthony Drive. So for all due respect, I don't think that is the reason not to proceed with you, making your review of our application. You know, it's also interesting that they didn't appear before, but not here tonight. They've tried to do sort of a land grab between us, was saying that some of these issues can go away if we would give them land at the back of the property. And it's sort of the board being used as a pawn to advance their goals that I think I'm concerned about. I would just suggest that the, the application should be reviewed without taking a decision because you don't know one way or the other, what, you're not interpreting easements. There is an easement, we have access, and the courts ultimately would decide that. And tha- that is the position I would take with, um, respect to the application before you tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick. Anyone else wish to comment on this? All right, I'm gonna hold off on closing or adjourned the public hearing till we just, till we go around the board for, for additional comments. Start with, uh, Peter?
Um, Mr. Ward-Willis made the comment that, uh, boards address land use, not private property disputes and that, that may be so. I don't know, I'm not an attorney. But the, the question of, something that is relative to the site plan, you know, the putting a note on the plans that if an agreement is reached, if an agreement is reached, you know, the, the future landscaping would be done, I don't think that's a real, uh, strong negotiating position for the planning board. And that is a site plan issue and it's something that I, I am concerned about. I also think it wouldn't hurt for us, again, considering the traffic, change in traffic potential, you know, to adjourn this so we can take another look. And those are my comments.
Yeah, I believe that, uh, Chris said they would be open to a, as well to a, um, escrow for the landscaping perhaps.
They would be welcome to placing an escrow and, 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 you know, uh, it was just a suggesting, suggestion, in terms of presenting it on the plan so that you would have an interpretation of what, uh, the applicant would be willing to commit to do. The one thing I do wanna add, uh, with regards to the existing access points, the, the easements that we've previously provided to you and they're specific, outline the particular uses for, uh, each location, we are continuing to utilize those access easements for that same reason. The westernmost is for the maintenance, uh, of the shop and the, uh, the easternmost is for exit or to go to the showroom. In this case, since we're eliminating the access, uh, to the showroom, it's primarily just for egress from the, uh, showroom, uh, property to, uh, Route 9. So I, I do wanna add that we're not making any changes in terms of the use of those easements. They are in conjunction with what the easements are on the property. We're not adding a burden, uh, to those easements. We're actually minimizing it by eliminating, the new vehicles that are being delivered to the site.
Yep.
And this is, to what we were doing as part of our previous application is eliminating the new vehicles that were being brought to the site.
All right, thanks, Chris. We go to Ben? Oh, you're on mute, Ben. Do you have any, any comments?
Ben, you're still on mute.
Yeah, he's working.
Okay. My only concern is, although I heard the attorneys say that the dispute between the applicant and Country Club is not part of what's in front of the planning board at this time. But I'm just concerned about in the future, if something happens and we approve it, can either party come back and say, "Well, they shouldn't have, the planning board shouldn't have approved it," and they, they could come back after the town. Probably, most likely, Country Club, not Mazda. Lisa?
I, I always like when I get asked to predict the future. But i- it is entirely possible that there may be litigation that results in this in the future and it is possible that, um, the town could be named in a lawsuit if it approves it. It's also possible that if it fails to approve it, it could be named by Mazda for failing to approve it. And named in a litigation is not the same as liability existing, but it does incur costs for the town. And I, I don't have a further comment on that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Lisa, how does that work though? Because we already approved this.
Well, the point that was made by, um, Country Club Apartments that is disputed here by Mr. Willis, Board Willis, is that the, when we approved it, the acquisition was contemplated and, um, it's true that Country Club did not appear or oppose that. They claim that they didn't get notice of it, um, even though we do have a record that we sent them, at least to the applicant, to Country Club themselves. But the issue is, their claim now is that since the property has been purchased and it, once it's merged, that that merger is what gives them the right to enjoin the use of the easement. Whether that is agreed with by a court of law, if it ever gets to a court of law, is something I don't know the answer to.
I, 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 if I can add one thing to that also, uh, they were, were noticed, uh, both for ZBA and the planning board. We met with Mr. Stanger on several occasions, if you recall, uh, back in September, when we talked about converting the easternmost access to a right turn in, right turnout only. That was also based on dialogue with Mr. Stanger. And then we were blindsided by Mr. Stanger's letter and, uh, then we began our dealings with, uh, Mr. Al Roberts of their office. And as, uh, Nick alluded to earlier, um, this is more about a land swap of our remaining land than it is about access. This could go away if we give them the remaining property in the back. That's what's causing the letters that are before you now. And if I could just build on what Chris said, as a practical matter, if this application doesn't proceed or if you adjourn it or we withdraw because it's not, it's taking too long, we have the underlying original approval and the reason we're before the board tonight-
And the reason we're before the board tonight is to respond to some of the concerns from our neighbor, the Country Club, to make the access more workable to address some of their concerns. But if that doesn't happen, or if it's delayed, we could just act upon our original building permit. So it seems almost, all due respect, self-defeating to suggest that a better plan should be delayed because an adjacent property owner who's not at tonight's public hearing, but has written letters, is objecting to making the plan better. They won't take yes for an answer. And I find that problematic, and I think in my point as an advocate for my client, it really speaks to their intention. It's not about the access. Because if it was, they would be here, they'd be working with us, they wouldn't be objecting to a plan that improves upon the conditions because if we don't get this approval, we'll just build out what's been approved before and, and we don't want to. We'd like to make it work with our neighbor and make things better than, address their comments.
Yeah, and, and, and Nick just added, this, this was a previous condition of the approval was to obtain the updated easement agreements. And we've been unable to do so, and now that's why we're back before the planning board.
So you're just, yep, you have the existing easement agreements with what you have now. But they're saying they, they, they could become invalid because of the additional land.
So we're kind of at a conundrum that, you know, if we, we continue to postpone the public hearing or, or delay the pu- public hearing, or adjourn it, I'm sorry, but i- i- it comes down to, you know, we're not going to be able to satisfy, yeah, at this point, it doesn't seem in, in terms of, in, in agreement unless we're willing to give up the rear, uh, land of the property. Uh, that's our only way of overcoming their, their easement concerns. There's an overburden on their easement if they were to have the property in the back. I find that hard to believe how just giving a piece of property in the back undoes any burden, as Mr. Stanger noted in his letters regarding the easement. But that is, seems to be the case.
That, yeah, that should be unrelated to the, the amount of traffic on Anthony Drive.
You are correct, but that, that's how we can re, that's our only means of resolving it with the neighbor.
All right, let's continue.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Um, they mentioned these, uh, without regard to, you know, the nature of the dispute, or, or the, the role of the, the private property owner. One of the board members alluded to a change in the landscaping, and there's also some incremental differences in, in grading for the entrances that, between the, um, original plan, the approved plan and the amended plan. If, if, if there are discussions and this might be resolved, is it, is it possible that if this was deferred, if the decision point was deferred to, for one month, or maybe for two months, is it possible that the board would have greater certainty regarding those specific issues aside from the property dispute? Are those, those discussions are currently underway and they might be resolved, or they might not be in a month? Is that right?
Well, that's true. They might be, they might not be, but I think we're getting it to the territory, which I defer to your counsel, but the courts are clear. This is why board should not get involved in a private dispute because you're making a decision now. Our application is going to be contingent upon whether we can reach an agreement with someone who this board is now empowering to be a partner in our land use agreement.
I, I, I'm referring though not to the dispute, but to, there's a difference in the lands, in the landscaping and in the grading for the access points between the previously proposed plan and this amended plan. And those are a matter of differences between the plan without regard to the property dispute. But it's possible, right now, you can't propose those things, but it's possible that if, if the board deferred it for a month, they could have greater certainty with regard to those changes.
All right, thanks Eric.
Chris, can you respond to that?
Well, I, I, I think with regards to greater certainty as it relates to those changes, it, it's a, it's a contingent upon whether or not an agreement with Country Clubs can be reached. The, the access points as they are today on the westernmost, eastern portion of the property are going to re, with the plans as presented are intended to remain the same. The same location and the same grading as you come from Anthony Drive onto the property. Once you come onto the property, there will be a change in the grading proposed to accommodate the new, uh, building, uh, footprint. As it relates to the landscaping, uh, along Anthony Drive, maybe one other thing I can offer at this point in time is maybe for that lost landscaping along Anthony Drive, we can incorporate that elsewhere into our overall site plan. If, if that may, may help as well.
But the issue, the, that landscaping was not, um, the original plan provided for that landscaping, not to address landscaping on the site overall, but to address buffer required, but to, to address buffering and sightline visual.
Restoration as well.
Correct. Yeah. So that, that's all. It's not, not a huge deal, but I just wanted to hold that out for the board.
Yeah, I think there's sufficient landscaping on the rest of the site. Myself, but we continue around the board for comments. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have, um, any, my only thing that I was gonna bring up tonight was the, um, the possibility of a Route 9 sidewalk, but that may be something that would have to be talked about at a later date and not necessarily tonight. Um, a- as far as this, um, this is concerned, I, I see no reason why we can't approve it tonight, guys. Um, li- like, uh, like the lawyers are, are talking about. It's not necessarily that this land dispute has nothing to do with us. You know, we can possibly put in an approval, uh, I noted about landscaping or, or something else pertaining to, to a future landscaped partial, if you want to do that. Um, otherwise, I don't, I don't see why we can't do this. But, you know, it, everyone has to agree, so.
Yep.
Those are my, that, that's, that's my thoughts.
All right, thanks.
Nicole, just, just for clarification, there is a sidewalk along the entire Route 9 corridor.
Right. I mean, that was one of my comments with, with the sidewalk, you know, since it's been a year, is, is DOT more amenable now to moving it back a little bit from the, to be safer?
The, with regards to moving it, uh, it would require a land donation as the sidewalk would occur on our property. Is, is what a DOT has shared with us.
They, okay, they would not deal with just an easement or something?
Uh, it, no, it'd be a land donation as they want to have the, uh, sidewalk within their right of way. Because as you're aware, there are numerous utilities there in terms of the, uh, utility poles, uh, the hydrant that's there. And they're recently, uh, they made some improvements a- a- along the right of way there. Uh, the DOT has, so we'd have to kind of move that sidewalk a little further into our site in order to meet the, uh, improvements that they've made because of the slope that would traverse down to that. We'd be having to rise up in slope and then drop down again on the, uh, northeast corner of our site. It's, it's a, it.
Yeah, what were they doing there recently, Chris? There were?
I'm sorry?
There was some recent, uh, construction there going on?
Yes, there, um, there, there is a visually impaired individual in, in this area. And, uh, there has been, uh, from what I understand, there was a, um, some pedestrian, uh, improvements done to assist that individual.
Okay.
But ours, we would continue to build upon that in terms of modifying the crosswalk and creating the accessibility further south along Route 9.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, Rocco, any comments?
I've got a question for Don. Am I unmuted? Yes, I am. Uh, with the change that they're proposing along Route 9 with the, uh, exit, the, the change from the e- ingress, uh, 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 outgress on Route 9, do you see any issues with that? Because I, I mean, I don't see a plan that shows that and to, to be able to review that.
I'm sorry, Rocco. Could you, uh, could you repeat that again?
Yeah, there, there, if I'm not mistaken, I think I heard Chris say that the, uh, they're going to modify the, the entrances, exits on Route, uh, 9. They're going to, uh, no?
We are not modifying the entrance or exit on Route 9.
No, that's, yeah, that's.
Isn't that the easternmost? What am I, uh, am I talking about Anthony Drive?
Yeah, Anthony Drive.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
That's gonna be a right turnout only, and if you recall, the board wanted to eliminate the left turns there because of the short queue distance to the light.
Okay.
And now it's just going to be a right turnout only.
All right, all right. My mistake. Uh, I don't have any other comments, uh, other than what's already been stated. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rocco. Yeah, that, that, that entrance had, uh, previous approved plan was a right in and a right out. Now that right in will be eliminated to be, because it has to make, meet the existing easement. All right, Bob, what say you?
Hey, see, um, the pedestrian walkway along Route 9, the way it's currently laid out, my understanding, it doesn't meet the code for a distance from the highway.
In some places.
Which I think is four feet.
Yeah, some places.
Is that true or?
Go ahead, Chris, if you have any. I think it meets it in some places, but there's some places where it's tight.
It, it meets it with, with the exception, uh, along the, um, northeastern portion of our site. And, and I, and in, from the DOT's perspective, you know, we're requesting a waiver. And that's waiver is related to the fact that there are existing utilities within the northeastern portion of the property, which prohibits us from locating that sidewalk to be approximately four feet. You know, if you look at, we have utility poles, uh, we have hydrants. So we're trying to, instead of constantly making abrupt changes in the sidewalk, we have straight sections of the sidewalk to avoid those obstructions which are spaced apart. And that's, and we're also, eventually, we would have to tie in to the, uh, make a connection to the curb line along the Route 9 Anthony Drive intersection, uh, in order to meet the, the ADA improvements at that location in, and cross Anthony Drive.
Okay, so you have to, you have to work with DOT to get that lined up. Go ahead, Bob.
You, have you, have you pursued the waiver?
Uh, that's part of our submission with, with the DOT. Uh, we, we've resubmitted DOT and we are still waiting. We, we received comments, we resubmitted, and we are waiting on their final review. Uh, we resubmitted in September to them.
And the other, you know, question I've got, and I'm, you know, way out of my comfort zone talking about these legal, legal matters, but if there, my understanding from listening and, and what we've read, there's an active dispute underway that is not yet resolved and may wind up being, uh, settled by courts. Uh, and that, isn't that gonna have, depending on how it goes, effect on what the plan is? You know, if we approve something today, it could get turned around. If we approve it, it could stay where it is, but isn't there some ambiguity now about what it is we're actually gonna be approving?
I can answer that. The, I don't think there's the ambiguity. I think it's clear what you're approving. I think to answer your question, what happens if we're not correct, well, obviously, we think we are, we'd have to come back and then, uh, get amended site plan approval and address the issue then. But that's not what's, what's before you is the application showing the access as it's shown on Route 9 and also out Anthony Drive.
And part of that plan is what's under dispute now, right?
Yes, they, they're, they're disputing. We don't think there's any validity to that, that we have the rights that we presented to the board, but yes.
Right. But, yeah, okay, it's still, I'm just, you know, I guess a little hesitant to say approve when it, it may turn out to be something different. And like I said, I'm not on firm legal grounds with this, but that's kind of my opinion right now.
I would request the board to speak with their counsel because the case law we provided, and in my conversations with Ms. Cobb, is quite clear that when there's a dispute about the applicability of a private easement, whether it's a drainage, whether it's a stormwater, whether it's an access easement, that it should not hold up the land use application we've provided to be applicable case law. And I know from my conversation with Ms. Cobb that there's agreement there, but I, I, I won't speak for, I would just suggest if that's one of the board's concerned, you speak with your counsel in the executive session to get that advice, but I think the law is clear. Thank you.
All right.
All right, well?
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Joan?
Um, I agree with Nicole. I think that we should move forward. I feel like there's, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and there's consequences for action and consequences for inaction in terms of potential legal exposure. So I think that we should move forward. That's my only comment.
All right, thanks. In my two cents, let's see. I mean, essentially what we're being asked to look at is the, is to change, is to just amend the plan from our previous plan to use the existing easements on Anthony Drive. So if we're satisfied, or we, so the question is, are we satisfied with the way the traffic would flow from Anthony Drive with those existing easements versus the ones that we had before? And, uh.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If, if there were no prior approval here, I think I would recommend that the board defer on the account, concept that even though I know Nick would disagree with me, that, um, the access to Anthony Drive would be a fundamental element, I think, of the site plan approval and the traffic flow within the site. But here we have a prior approval that is still viable and in existence. And so given that fact, I am comfortable if the board wants to go forward and approve tonight, um, just being aware that there is this controversy out there. Um, and it may be that there is court action that seeks to enjoin the use by Mazda of Anthony Drive, and then if that's the case, as Mr. Ward-Willis says, they will need to come back for amended site plan approval.
Right.
But since they have an existing approval, I think I'm comfortable if the board wants to move forward.
I mean, that was kind of the way I was thinking because the, I mean, they have a, they have a, uh, condition on their, on their plan, just if we approve it, their condition is that they manage those easements, one way or the other. And that was the condition on the previous site plan, and we'll have that condition as well, that they need to get confirmed easement. So if they can't get that as part of the condition, then they have to come in with an amended plan. Whether it's close off those entrances and work with just Route 9, or what, uh, it turns out to be. But I don't, personally, I don't see a reason to.
Well, and Nick or Chris can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think one of the reasons for the current application is to remove the condition that requires working out an easement with Country Club Apartments on the belief that, that may not be possible. And therefore, what they're seeking to do is maintain the status quo with respect to Anthony Drive for this application and simply make any changes that they need to within their property. And that's why the, um, they can close off the middle driveway on their property and the landscaping is not possible at this time because it's on Country Club Apartments' property. Um, and that's why they're proposing the bond or the escrow payment for that.
I would suggest we, uh, if we approve here, that we do the escrow, add that as a condition to get that landscaping done eventually. If that gets worked out. I move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll, call, vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And I'm of the belief we should go ahead with the, the motion, if you'd like to do that, Nicole, and see where we go. With, with the condition that we add the, the landscaping escrow. Thanks for the word.
I move that the planning board find that the Mazda expansion amended, amended special use permit and site plan involves incremental changes to the project of negligible magnitude and scope, and that are non-significant and consistent with the previous secret negative declaration adopted September 19th, 2019. As modified by the, by the proposed incremental declaration adopted September 19th, 2019, as modified by the, by the proposed incremental changes described in the amended application submitted November 23rd, 2020, and related plans and materials.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended special use permit approval and conditional amended site plan review approval subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following 1 through 11 landscaping escrow.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to wish you all, uh, and your family, uh, wonderful and healthy holiday season, and, uh, make 2021, it's gotta be better than 2020.
Happy holidays.
We thought we'd see things.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
We thought we'd see things clearly in 2020, but apparently that didn't happen.
Better, better than me. Thank you.
All right, same to you, Chris. Have, have a great holiday, and, uh, good luck with the negotiations.
Thank you.
Next up is Locust Grove Cross Incs, and they're on for just adjournment. So I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January 21st, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob? Hope, Bob, had to step out for a few minutes, I think. And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. Next up is Stuart Shops at the South Road. To be adjourned, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January 21st, 2021.
Regent.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob? That's Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. All right, at this time, I move that we allow public comments on any other items on tonight's agenda, and we ask that you please limit your comments, limit your comments to three minutes, and the planning board will consider the comments during this portion of the meeting, but will not respond to them directly during the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, or six zero. Bob is still out. All right, anyone in the audience wish to comment on other items on tonight's agenda?
Uh, we have a raised hand from, uh, Ally Bob.
All right.
Hello, my name is Ally. I live at 2821 Route 9D. It's, um, uh, this, my comments are gonna be about South Hills Commons. I am, um, going to be affected on like two sides of my property by this project. Um, I did see the updated plans on this, where they now want to do four buildings instead of two, and I've seen that they are moving the parking lots. Um, they're pretty much like, the parking lots are in our backyard now. It seems like that there's double the amount of cars that can now be facing our backyard and my neighbor's backyard. Um, you know, headlights, et cetera, um, that are gonna be able to, you know, it, it's going to affect our way that we live in our, on our property. And here's a few other things that, um, are a little bit concerning to me. I'm worried about light and noise pollution. Um, there's bound to be more noise. There isn't much now besides Route nine, which is obviously, or I mean, I'm sorry, 9D, which is obviously busy. Um, we're gonna have less privacy. These buildings are gonna be towering over our house. It's gonna be now going farther, um, on the back of our house into my neighbor's property, who is an old woman who lives there. Um, it's gonna have a really bad effect on wildlife. There's tons of wildlife in this area. I don't know where these animals are gonna go. I've seen three deer get hit in front of my house while living here, and I've lived here for one year. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's really upsetting. The traffic is gonna be insane. The traffic's already insane. You guys should come down here on rush hour, even though it's pandemic season, uh, the traffic is still insane. It's crazy. I mean, it takes us a few minutes to pull out of our driveway most of the time, and you gotta be really careful, because people speed down the road. It's a 40 mile an hour road. Um, I'm also concerned that we have an easement in our backyard, and I'm not sure if this project is going to be, um, affecting our easement. I don't know if it's going to be built onto, et cetera. I don't know if we're gonna have an issue with flooding. Um, the easement is for a sewer station, um, in the backyard. Um, and other than that, um, I know, it seems like they've proven it's not a wetlands back there, although according to the brush and like the wildlife, not the wildlife, but the, um, what do you call it? The, the, the trees, the brush and everything back there. It seems like there's something going on. There's not many tall trees that are, you know, there's, there's nothing that, I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm just not understanding how they're figuring it's not a wetlands anymore. It seems like it is, and it is on parcel access that it, it is a wetlands. And, um, I'm also worried about the square footage of these units, because according to the plans, it says each building is like over 4,000 square feet, and that means that these two-bedroom apartments are like less than 1,000 square feet each. Um, and other than that, I think that is, that are, those are all my comments, everything I said last time. And, uh, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Are, are you the White House that's adjacent to the?
Yep. Yeah, this would be going on the side of our property and on the back.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have your letter as well that you submitted.
Wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else wish to make comments on?
There's a hand, Barbara. Raise your hand.
Okay, I'm on, am I still muted or I'm unmuted?
Nope, you're on, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening. I'm Barbara Kaplan. I'm president of the Chanticleer Condominium Association, and I have been here, like Ally, we've been speaking quite, uh, vigorously about this project. My concern right now is when I looked at, I believe it's slide 48, that talks about the property line. Uh, right now, the two properties have been separated by, um, brush and some older trees. And now we're seeing that the property line is coming closer, almost right on top of our dumpster. And we don't know if the survey has done, and if it was, we would like to have a copy of it to see where this line's actually come and invade into our property. Uh, we're concerned deeply. That's the first thing. The second thing is the trees that are depicted in that slide look like they're beautiful trees. The trees are falling down, just like the other one did up higher on the hill, and you saw the rotted, uh, tree there. There's one tree that's across from our units seven and eight that is already leaning at a like a 30 degree angle, and you can't see its, uh, roots. And I can't fathom why this, these trees would be, uh, considered good, uh, separation from the properties. We really want a fence. We want a fence to be put up. There is going to be a lot of noise factor to these apartments. Those, uh, patios are there. They have a picnic area with the barbecue, all facing our property. A fence would be good, you know, what they say, good fences make good neighbors. The, and I would think that the people that rent those units would wanna have some privacy and not be smelling car fumes as we parked our vehicles where they are. And, um, the second thing is we wanted to know about what kind of lighting might be in the area, uh, that might affect our buildings A and B, and also where their sign, entrance sign is going to be going into the property. Uh, we wanna make sure that it's, people are not going to be changing, turning into Chanticleer Condominium, and, um, thinking that they can go there, and then, oh, good, we can park here and cut through, because there's no fence. There's brush, uh, these little, I don't know what size evergreens they're going to put in, but we really have a concern, uh, about where we are, and we want to know how we can get, uh, a copy of the survey that was done, because there's no stakes or anything, or flags or nails put in the road into our property line to find us where, um, where we begin and where they end. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. Did they, just a quick question, Barbara, did they, was the, did the owner, uh, cut down that rotting tree? Did they take care of that?
That rotten tree was finally cut down after we had the meeting that was discussed and, um, that it was brought to the attention, I guess, of everyone. So they did finally, after almost a year and a half, come and cut that tree down, and it was rotted to the core. And what we're really concerned about now is it's such a large hole or burrow that we are concerned that there could be some creatures, wildlife creatures, raccoons, foxes, whatever may be, using that. It really should be cut better and, um, disposed of better on the property, not just staring out at our building sign.
All right, thanks again. All right, anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on plans, on any plans on tonight's agenda?
And you can raise your hand, or just go ahead and speak it now, or, uh, if you're on a phone, you would need star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand.
And the public should know that everything that's on the rest of the agenda is not a public hearing. They're simply on for discussions with the board.
Correct.
So if you have any comments to make about any of the upcoming projects, now would be the time. Other, this would be the end of any public comment portion of the meeting.
No, we're not seeing anyone else. So I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next up on the agenda is South Hills Commons. Who is here representing that tonight?
Hi, this is Amy. I'm a jury from Dan Stokosa. How is everyone?
Amy? Do you wanna, uh,
So.
go over the changes?
In response, yeah. So in response to the, the planning board's comments, we revised the buildings. We are now proposing four buildings as opposed to two, and each building has six units in it. Um, it's a two-story building, and it requires 48 parking spaces for 24 units. We're proposing 61, so we have additional visitor space. Uh, we are adding a row of arborvitae along the, the east and south portion of the parking area and drive, driveway. So that's gonna be a pretty thick hedgerow, basically. Uh, we're, we're calling for 36 inches to 48 inches in height, and arborvitae grow pretty significantly each year. Uh, we've modeled the buildings after the Lewis Country Farm Development and Eastdale. We've added architectural features that should improve the, the visual appearance of them. Uh, we have about a 50-foot non-clearing buffer behind Ms. Bob's house, so there'll be vegetation that will not be disturbed. And then we're, in addition to that, adding the row of arborvitae.
All right. Thanks.
Um, as far as lighting goes into the, uh, the, the lighting's gonna, it's proposed to be decorative lighting on the site, and then we'll have overhang-mounted recess lights at the entrances of the buildings. Like I said, the buildings are each only two stories high, so as far as towering over the houses, I don't know that there would be that much of an impact. They're over 100, the closest building is over 100 feet from, sorry, the parking lot is over 100 feet from the closest building on the residential parcels along Route 9D. Uh, I'm not familiar with the easement that was mentioned. I know that there is a sewer easement at some, but not along the rear of the residential parcels.
It sounds like.
The encroachment at, what's, is there a question?
I was gonna say, I, I think the neighbor mentioned it might be a sewer pump station. All right, go ahead.
There is, uh, along the northern edge of the parcel, I think there is. Uh, the entrance sign would be fairly far from where Chanticleer is, because much of that will not be vegetated. And there is actually, it looks like there's an encroachment from Chanticleer onto this parcel. Looks like part of their parking area is, is encroaching on, on this area.
Yeah, the upper lot.
That's along the rear of, or towards the rear of the parking of, uh, our parcel.
Gonna be a dog kennel?
Um, the traffic, what's up?
They're gonna be a dog kennel? I hear dogs bark.
I wish I had one right now, actually. So we, we revised the layout and the buildings in consideration of what the planning board requested. So we didn't, we didn't provide a revised SWIP, because if this layout is not suitable, it would be, it, it's a lot of work to, to change it again, just to modify a layout. So we're presenting this to the board to get their, uh,
Feedback.
to see how the board feels about the
Sounds good. We, I mean, we'll go around, we'll go around the board for comments then, and, uh, but I, I do think it's a improved plan, uh, for sure, in a, in a variety of ways.
Thanks.
We go to Kristen first for her recommendation?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Amy, for the overview. Um, I would also like to acknowledge those, uh, members of the public and community who have, uh, provided their comments regarding this project. Um, we are, uh, as it's been indicated, um, at a point where we're, uh, for the planning board purposes, staff has, has, um, you know, recommended deferral at this point. This appearance is largely, uh, for the planning board to weigh in on the revised layout and design of the project. Um, just a couple of quick points, again, just for clarification. Uh, four buildings are proposed instead of two buildings at this point, two stories each. Originally proposed were 25 units. There are now going to be a total of 24 units, um, which does meet the maximum density calculation per the town code. Um, you know, again, that's, that's, that's a board discussion, if, if they'd like to have that with the applicant about, you know, uh, pushing for less units, um, in order to occupy less space in this particular application. Um, but, you know, at this time, staff, you know, has confirmed that, um, you know, they're, they're meeting the town code, um, for the number of units. Um, to that end, they have also, uh, exceeded the required parking counts, um, per the code. They required 48 parking spaces. They are proposing 61 parking spaces. Um, there are a couple of instances where accessible, um, parking spaces are, are accompanied by accessible aisles, uh, that do not meet building code requirements. So, um, just by way of having to adjust some of those, they might lose a couple of parking spaces off of that 61 right off the top. Um, there's also some hindrance of a, a proposed fire hydrant. So, you know, perhaps there's an ability to, um, shave down a couple of those parking spaces, especially with respect to, uh, them being proposed at the back end of some of those single-family residential properties. Um, but again, this evening, it's largely a, a discussion of whether or not the board feels comfortable with the, uh, realignment and, and adjustments that have been made for their codes and discussions and staff recommendations. Um, there used to be, you know, parking proposed along the backside or west side of those two, uh, buildings, three and four, um, which, you know, were not meeting, uh, building code requirements in terms of accessibility, and just from a practical planning standpoint, didn't make sense. Um, I know that there are also concerns from the neighbors to the north about, um, possibly placing a fence. Um, it appeared, and, uh, you know, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, that the applicant was amenable to this, um, in a prior conversation, and I think just as a part of providing this updated plan and, and the focus on the And I think just as a part of providing this updated plan and, and the focus on the design and layout for the buildings, some of those other details got lost, so it was documented in my and other staff recommendations this time around to make sure that that's included as part of a future submission. And in that case, you know, we've had other properties where, you know, if a fence is being proposed, that the applicant might even have the ability to weigh in on the character or style of the fence. I'm not sure if that's something you might be able to take to your client to see if they'd be amenable to, just like the color or, you know, the texture of the fence. Again, I, you know, there, there is landscaping proposed to the north. I know the planning board will be interested in having that discussion with you about the quality of what is being proposed. I won't steal their thunder. But just a couple of other items as it relates to some of the prior discussions about this application. There is now a sidewalk proposed along Route ninety, to the extent of this property or applicant's ownership, I should say. So, and again, some of those finer details will have to be worked out in terms of access. And if there is a sewer easement or access easement, you know, DOT is going to have to be looped into that conversation and that conversation will continue as this project review continues. And then that just sort of brings me to, again, a reminder to the planning board and those listening in terms of, you know, community, the community at large, but also the neighbors that are immediately north and south and east of this. The, the application is before the planning board, in essence, for, to start the planet, the site plan review discussion. But the town board actually referred this application, this is procedural. The town board refers the application to the planning board and asks the planning board to provide an advisory report regarding the zoning district change. So there is a request for a zoning district change from R twenty to RM. So at the, you know, the next steps, once the planning board is there, would be to, you know, sort of open a public hearing. And I encourage those folks that have been providing comments to make sure that you're, you know, ready to provide those comments. Again, you can provide them in writing, you can keep, you know, you're still going to be made aware when those public hearings are
Yeah, they'll be notified as adjacent property owners.
By mailings. And so, you know, those comments will become a part of an official record. But the planning board's next step would be ultimately looking at SEACR and, and providing an advisory report to the town board regarding the zoning district change. So by no means is this being approved at this time. Staff is recommending a deferral, there are certainly some details that need to be honed. And, and just one more thing, just because I'm looking at it, on the lighting, as it's proposed right now along the northern property boundary, is at full cutoff according to their photometrics plan, which is required by, actually, it exceeds what's required by the town code. I think it's supposed to be like a point one, but it's at point zero. So, and those types of things, despite the application, if when it did ever move forward, are actually, in fact, enforceable by our zoning department. So just thought I would also offer that up for the community's benefit as well.
Yeah, I saw the lighting plan ends with their pavement even, so there's no lights spilled into the woods behind the, the house there as well as to the north beyond the buildings.
Okay, I'm done, I promise.
All right, thanks. I'm gonna go to Don and get his take from engineering. First, I'll mention that, you know, our landscape consultant had, our environmental consultant Carol had, had previously looked at their, that there's no wetland impact by this particular, where they're placing the buildings on this site. So Don, comments on that and if you have any knowledge of that sewer pump station?
I do not know if that's an easement for the sewage pump station, that's something that we could check into. Other than that, as Amy had mentioned, we're, they have, they've held off on doing a number of things, waiting for the board to approve this conceptually. So we still have pretty much the same comments as we had last time and, you know, there's quite a ways to go yet.
Yep, you need a SWIP first to look things over.
Yep.
Thanks, Don. At this point, we'll go around the board for, for comments then. This time, I'll start with Joan.
Hi, Amy. I think that the plan certainly appears to be responsive to the concerns previously raised by the town planning board, so I do appreciate that. And I guess, I, I have a question for Christian, Kristen, just in terms of procedure. I understand that we're looking at the layout tonight and then subsequent will consider the appropriateness of a, a zoning change. So in light of that two-step analysis, should we just focus tonight on the plan itself and set aside, you know, concerns or, or comment about the bigger issue of the zoning change?
I think that's a, a great question. You know, I think because this application in large part has appeared a few times before the planning board, that you, if you have specific questions regarding landscaping or lighting or the parking count or access to the building, I, I do think that's, you know, all within reason to be discussing still at this point. Because ultimately, when you're making that recommendation or the advisory report, you should be thinking about all of those items and if they have actually been addressed or can be achieved appropriately, you know, you know, when you're providing your, your recommendation to the, the town board about the change in zone. Because if ultimately they, they can't achieve it in a way that is amenable to our code, which again, I'm not going to get into technicalities, but, you know, if, if you have genuine concerns about the visual aesthetic, you know, I think it's all fair game at this point.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think the applicant is doing everything that they can within the constraints of this lot to address the issues raised, but I just, my concern is just that the lot itself and the, the landscape, the, you know, the, the terrain, which limits where you can actually do your construction. And so I feel like that exacerbates concerns about increasing density in a, in a zone that has a lower density. So, you know, at the end of the day, I just don't know whether, despite their best efforts, for me personally, it, it's going to be enough for me to kind of move on to that next step for a recommendation. So that's, I just want to put that out there, in the interest of disclosure.
All right. Bob?
Here we go. Yeah, I just, I had a question, I don't know if this is, are these the diagrams in here? Is it okay to comment on these now or?
Yep.
All right. The, the one with, I just had one question on the vehicle movement chart that shows, I guess that's fire truck at the top, forty-eight feet long. And it's trying to stand the diagram to come out. Once a truck is in, they have to go down to the end by building four and somehow do looks like a three or four or five-point turn in order to turn a forty-eight-foot truck around. In a, that space, according to the code, was thirty-seven, thirty-eight feet. So I'm just, you know, is that, is that adequate? Doesn't seem like it's an easy task to turn a fire truck around in, in a space that's smaller than it is long and especially if there's cars parked in front of building four.
There are, the fire code has specifications on what is required for a truck turnaround. And I will verify that these are the proper dimensions, if not, they can be. We have room to expand that portion of the parking area to provide a larger turnaround if need be.
Okay, I, I just found it a little curious, that's all. You know, but maybe these, the guys who drive these trucks are very, very skilled in that, though it's not a problem. But it would be good to
We also have enough room behind, okay, we also have room behind buildings three and four to allow for an apparatus access way if it's required to go around the building. So we've left room to provide fire access.
All right.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Rocco?
Okay, sorry, I, I thought it was unmuted, but it wasn't. Okay, Amy, a couple of things. Initially, when I looked at these, I had the concerns when I looked at the various diagrams here. You got the first one up that we can talk about, L two, which is the landscaping. I noticed that your proposals for the, for the deciduous trees there, anyway, the oaks and the maples were to plant them in the sizes of approximately three to three and a half feet tall. And that does not seem to, to do much, is that, is that plant size? Is that, what am I saying there? Is that, does that show height or is that just, what is the height of those trees?
Those are usually specified in caliber size, so that's the, that's the trunk size. I'll verify what the height is, usually with a three-inch caliber tree.
Right, that, that does not seem like they would be very tall. At least I think you show in the, at least for the evergreens, you're showing a height of six to eight feet tall, which goes along the eastern boundary, I think, and the, the southern boundary. At least the eastern boundary there to Chanticleer. Can you move the map down a little bit there? So that's what, on, on top there, you got a row of, that's of evergreens. Those are scheduled to be six to seven feet upon plant, if I'm not mistaken. You show a height there, you didn't show a height, I guess, on the maples and the oaks. So I would say, and along with that, it seems like I also had a question about the fence and the considerations, especially for, not only the houses along nine D there, but also the Chanticleer apartments and the, also the houses there to the, the south, no, the, the north or west where they are. So there'll be houses on the north there and on the west portion. So those comments were, I think, where I'm concerned at this time. I did have some comments about drainage, but I'll wait until Don reviews the SWIP to see if those have been answered. But that's, but those are my initial concerns here, is that it looks like it's a privacy thing and the noise abatement with the trees. And plus the deciduous trees won't really provide a lot of privacy once the leaves are done.
Yep. All right, thanks, Rocco.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Hi. How are you tonight?
Good, Ari.
Good. Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of things that we were all kind of concerned with have already been brought up. I think that, you know, we had some concerns with Ms. Bop's letter. You know, ultimately, when you're doing something like this, you have to be good neighbor, right? So, like you said, you're not going to be touching the trees, what, behind her house, is that, is that what you had said before?
Correct, there's about a, I want to say about a fifty-foot buffer of trees that will not be disturbed in addition to the trees that we are planting, so that, that's another ten feet. So from the edge of the parking to the closest structure here, that's, that's about a hundred and three feet. And then the buildings are another sixty feet beyond that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, ultimately, you know, we're, we're kind of the voice of the people, so we want to make sure when going forward in this, that, you know, the neighbors that, that you guys are going to be building next to are going to be, have some type of privacy, whether it's fencing or landscaping or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's all I have.
You're fading out a little bit, Nicole?
Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right, we go to Ben.
I don't really have any questions, I mean, I like the new layout, it's more open. All the apartments are the same size now. Everybody's talking about all the other things for now, but I think we, I'm ready to move ahead with this. And I think it's going to be, eventually going to be a good thing. I like the design of the buildings too.
Yep.
That's it.
Thanks, Ben. And Peter?
First, I'd like to say that the, I agree with Ben that the, the change in architecture is a big improvement. I, I have a question for the town engineer. And that is, could you just give us an overview about the SWIP status?
Yeah, we, we don't have one yet.
Okay, I'll tell you why, you know, we were talking about, you know, the board has to approve conceptually this project. You have a steep slope of at least twenty-five percent that's draining directly into buildings three and four. I mean, it's, it seems to me, I'm not an engineer, it seems to me that that's going to be a challenge from an engineering standpoint, especially since there's, there's, although there's no wetland, it seems to be fairly, it seems to be a fairly high water table in that location. So I think before we do any, any conceptual approvals, we're going to have to have some idea how you're going to drain that twenty-five percent slope. Also, on the, the landscaping, we want to be sure you're putting in all these arborvitae, I'm not familiar with, with Green Giant, but just the name would imply that it's going to be a big plant when it grows. But if we really want to provide ample screening, a three-to-four-foot plant is not going to do the job. It's going to have to be at least a six-foot plant, even taking into consideration that you, you're providing an ample number, you have over a hundred plants there. We'll want them to, the other thing I want to be careful about is when, again, I'm not an arborist, that they seem to be placed fairly closely together. You know, if it would make more sense to use fewer plants and have them be healthy, I think there's some probably you, you'll want to take a look at. But otherwise, I would say arborvitae are a great, great buffer. I think it's, I think it's a very good choice. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
I'll add my two cents here. I do appreciate you went back and redid the plan because, you know, the buildings are now further back away from the, the houses on, along Route ninety. And as Peter said, the architecture looks much better. Splitting them up that way and reducing by one apartment makes it a nicer plan. You've got the amenity there now, you have the grill and the, and play area with some picnic tables, it looks like. So that's a plus for the residents. You've added the sidewalk, although the plan shows it as a four-foot sidewalk, I think five foot is our code for that. So we're going to make sure that's five feet. And we'll get that going because there's a lot of foot traffic from the village and from these guys going to, to the ball. And I appreciate that the parking was, was increased. So you have about a dozen more spaces than what the code requires, so that allows for visitors and reduces the potential of somebody trying to park on the Chanticleer lot and walk over. So that is a plus. And as I said, the lighting looks, looks pretty good. It's, it's dark, you know, that fifty-foot buffer to the house is dark as well as to the north, to Chanticleer. But I do think, I agree with some of the other board members that we want to make sure the landscaping is, is sufficient screening. Arborvitae, I think will be good to shield the headlights if they're big enough and any issues from traffic. But the deciduous trees, you know, we got at least half, half of the years, the leaves are off those trees. So you may want to consider some additional, some taller evergreens as well in there. I think we'll have, you know, the department take a look at the landscaping a little bit more. Maybe with our consultant to see, see what the thoughts are on that and it sounds like you're And it sounds like you're amenable to a fence, so if the, we want, we want to address the neighbors' concerns of, of noise and light, and I think that, as I said, the lighting looks pretty good. But noise can travel as well, so that the landscaping has to account for that. But overall, I think it's a much better plan than the two big long buildings that you had originally. And moving that parking.
Thank you.
Moving that parking in front, you don't have that, that gets the buildings back away, further away from the houses and no parking behind them. All right, that's my two cents, uh, ready to move forward with a motion?
Action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following ones through 10.
Nicole, could you get a little closer to your microphone? Because it's, for some reason, we're having a harder time hearing you.
Second.
Want me to do that again?
Well, we had it in front of us, so I think we're okay.
Yeah, I mean, I heard it, but it was very faint.
Right.
For some reason, you were coming through loud and clear the rest of the time, but something changed.
I heard you, Nicole.
Yeah, so did I. So it's been moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero. All right.
Happy holidays, Amy.
Comments?
Nicole, happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Good night.
Holidays.
All right, next up is Rogers Lot Line, Lot Line Revision. Who's here representing that project?
Uh, Frank Rogers and my son Christopher.
Welcome. Do you want to say anything about this? You were here, I remember, years ago to create that lot, I believe, so.
Yes, we did.
Modifying it now?
We, uh, now, we're at, at a point where we'd like to, uh, cede about a, a little less than three tenths of an acre uh, from 20 Main, which is Lot One, to my son's lot at 18 Main, Lot Number Two. Uh, we want to make sure that the, that the lots are correct and also we're thinking of the future. Uh, someday, we may, we may sell 20 Main and we, my wife and I have a place to go right across the driveway should we decide to build, um, and add on to my son's, uh, house at 18 Main. So that's, that's, we're, we're here for a lot line adjustment, uh, for about three tenths of an acre that we're giving, uh, from 20 Main to 18.
All right, thank you, sounds pretty straightforward. Uh, Kristen, for the department's recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, uh, Mr. Rogers. Uh, so the application is on for a seeker review, coastal consistency review, and lot line revision review. Uh, staff feels that it is relatively straightforward. There were, uh, some details that, um, you know, from the engineering department and planning staff that were just looking to secure up some of those items, uh, in writing on the, the, the plots that were shown um, in order for them to be filed. Um, but otherwise, uh, staff is recommending adoption of a seeker, uh, resolution for a Type II action, providing a coastal consistency review, um, and also adoption of a resolution to grant conditional lot line approval, revision approval.
Thanks, Kristen. Let's go around the board quick for comments, uh, Peter?
No comment.
Ben?
No comment.
Nicole?
The only comment that I wanted to make and have on record is that I am a client of Mr. Rogers. Um, other than that, I have no comments.
All right. Rocco?
Uh, no comment here.
Bob?
No comment.
And Joan?
No comment.
And myself, well, ditto, I guess. It, it looked pretty straightforward and it's, uh, just an amendment to the previous, uh, creation of that lot. So move forward with motions. Let me, um.
I move, I'm sorry.
Can you speak, can you get up, get up a little closer to the mic or something changed here?
Sure. I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria of a seeker Type II action pursuant to seeker part 617 dot 5 C-16, and that no further environmental review is required.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the Rogers Lot Line Revision is consistent with the Town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero.
Move that the planning board grant conditional lot line approval, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following one through seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero.
Happy holidays, Mr. Rogers.
So, thank you very much to all.
Yep.
And, uh, thank you.
Take care.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Enjoy. Next up is Friendly Ford. Coming in for a, a building modification. Who's on for this one?
I'm right here, can you guys, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, who?
Good evening, my name is Rich Corden with JMC, uh, appearing tonight on behalf of South Road Facilities, uh, Friendly Ford. Uh, joined tonight by Eric Kahn and Mark Binnecker with Friendly Ford, and, uh, the project architects, uh, Steve Bernaby and Carlo Mazzarelli from Mazzarelli Architects. Uh, we're here tonight, this is our first meeting, uh, introduce you guys to the project. Our, uh, our site is located at 2250 South Road, which is also known as Route 9. Uh, applicants proposing to add an additional eight service bays to the back of the existing building. Uh, there's a, there's a bit of a facility back there right now, it's about 2,800 square feet that's being removed, and we're constructing a new 6,800-square-foot, uh, service bay area. Um, we're here tonight, uh, working towards our specialty use permit and site plan approval from the board. I understand a number of you guys have, uh, seen the project, uh, already. I have a couple renderings, if I'd be able to share my screen and, uh, show you guys and start discussing.
That'd be great.
So as you guys can see, this is the existing site right here that's operating as Friendly Ford. Um, we're proposing a small addition to the back of the building. And what that's going to do is that's going to allow for the service of additional vehicles on site. A little bit of feedback. So that's that. There's a couple of, uh, constraints on the site, um, that we're going to be requesting some relief from the town with. Uh, first being, uh, the total lot coverage, our total lot coverage right now, as you guys can see, it, it's substantial, it's at about, uh, 90% where the code is at 75. So we're going to be, we're going to be working with the zoning depart, uh, ZVA to, uh, on a variance on that one. Um, another, another, uh, relief that we're going to be requesting is, uh, there's a 100-foot rear setback from a residential zone for the buildings, and we're going to be requesting a little bit of relief from that one to drop that down to 56 feet. Oh, side yard variance over here on the side of the site, where 40 yard, 40-foot is, um, required and 38 is proposed. Uh, as well as a 20-foot parking setback from the residential buildings. Uh, as you can see here, that's the site plan, there's really not that much to it. The next thing to discuss is you have a couple pictures here of our proposed construction. This is from looking on, uh, Route 9, looking north. It's that view. This is from Route 9, looking south towards the building, and this is the back of the addition right here. This is what we're proposing to construct.
Okay.
I have the project architect, uh, Carlo and Steve on board, maybe they would like to discuss, um, the renderings a little bit more.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, because I'm technologically inept here, first time on Zoom meeting, right? So the back building is basically a, um, it's an insulated panel, has a mineral core for some fire ratings that we are required. Have a bunch of overhead doors in the back, there are different depths to this building. The, the, um, one section will be required to, uh, service the larger vehicles. The other section has a detailing bay and three additional service, uh, areas. Um, it's a, like I said, it's a, has a little small four-and-a-half concrete stem wall coming out of the ground for our frost protection, and then we have this metal sandwich panel with a monoslope roof. It's about 22 to 21-foot high, because it does slope towards, towards, uh, Route 9. The color will match the existing building. If you're familiar with these new insulated panels, it's a much, uh, more durable and, um, hot, much higher R-value siding versus the original, uh, tin sheet, shall we call it, with the pre-engineered steel building. That's, uh, that's kind of in that middle area there, okay?
Okay.
And we have some windows that we put on the sides just to get some natural daylight in there. And of course, um, I mean, that's really basically it.
All right, thanks, Carlo. Yeah, you got, uh, Ford came in a few years ago to redo that whole building, so change the whole look.
Yep.
All right.
All right, uh, do you guys have any questions about the application?
Uh, we will go around the board and, and, uh, we will likely have some questions, but we'll start with, uh, Eric from our planning department for his comments.
Sure. Tonight, uh, the application is before the board. The only action, uh, for the board to take tonight would be to declare its intent to be lead agency and authorize the circulation of the application to other agencies. That said, uh, it is the first time before the board, uh, it would be appropriate to discuss, um, issues to help the application, uh, move forward expeditiously. So you have, uh, the staff comments on it, there are some information requirements to be addressed. Oh, and as a side note, uh, the, the environmental review is identified as a Type I action, because, solely because of the presence of a designated historic resource on, um, a neighboring property.
Yep.
No concerns have been identified relative to that yet, but the environmental review remains. Um, that's the appropriate classification according to seeker. Uh, as far as staff comments, uh, I guess the issues would be, one, there's an adjacent use on the northern parcel. Um, I know I've spoken with the applicant, they have some concerns about the use extending there. It, it's unclear what the code would require there, whether that needs to be part of the application or not. So the board is invited to discuss that. I did the other day find, uh, reference in an older file to, uh, a board knowledge of use of that site, um, under lease. And so I don't know if it's possible to continue some arrangements such as that, um, as an alternative to including it in an application. And so that might be something that the applicant can address and, and staff can, uh, research and look at going into the future, but the board is invited to discuss it. Secondly, the, uh, there are the variances that are requested, I don't think staff are not, the board's invited to discuss it. The, the variances for the building, um, it's a tight site, I don't think there are too many concerns. The board may want, in the past, has considered buffer requirements of the code, the BH district for the 30-foot setback from various yards to be landscaping. Uh, it's a tight site, there's not much room, the board historically has sought, uh, something along Route 9, along those lines. It, it, there's not much opportunity to do much here, um, but the board might want to consider what, what modifications might be made to maybe arrive at something mutually agreeable. The code also does provide the opportunity for the board to require a sidewalk. I don't know that it's even feasible here, but the board may want to get some additional information and discuss that as well. Those are our comments.
All right, thanks. Yeah, uh, my, uh, site visitor, it looks like it'd be about a nine-foot, uh, strip of grass out front there buffering Route 9. So there may be, maybe sidewalk room there. All right. Let's, uh, check with, uh, Don first, engineering from, any initials, look at this.
We have, uh, quite a few comments, uh, looking for some more plans, um, looking for them to, to label the drive aisle width and show us, uh, truck turning movements that are a little bit better, um, looking for an oil-water separator, emergency power at the pump station, uh, soil testing for the underground infiltrators, to name just a few.
Yep.
Don, we're, we're, we're in receipt of your comments, we're, uh, we'll work on responding to them in the next submission. We'll work on addressing them. There's nothing.
All right, thank you.
Feels to be a showstopper that we won't be able to work through with you.
Okay, good.
Okay.
All right, and go around the board for comments, uh, Peter?
At this time, no.
Ben?
Looks like this was the only access that is new addition will be by Friendly Ford personnel. Customers won't be allowed back there, right?
Yes, I believe so.
That's correct. Uh, this is really, uh, it's not a customer-facing building, it's, uh, for the technicians.
Right, but the customer doesn't drive back there, they park up front, then you take the car, bring it around.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, yeah, they do not, uh, enter that building.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
All right, thanks, Ben. Uh, Nicole?
Is there going to be any additional landscaping or lighting?
At this time, no additional landscaping or lighting is proposed.
Thank you.
Rocco?
Uh, yeah, you're, uh, I think you may have, have been in front of the board here in the past. I, I noticed that this is an archaeologically sensitive site. Have you, uh, you got, have, have you guys done any, uh, exploration in the past about that? And, uh, I know you're going to have to get, uh, some approvals, I guess, for that. Uh, I'm just curious where, where you've been with that and, uh, where you're going.
We, we will reach out to Shep, oh, just for their, just for a nod, that there's nothing of, uh, historical relevance that's going to be, uh, disturbed by the project. Uh, but as you know, the site's currently been, is, is currently developed and it's been developed for quite a while. Everything that, the whole area where we're working is, is currently disturbed, it's currently parking lot. So I, I don't really foresee much of, um, disruption to anything of historical value.
All right, well, that's it for now.
All right, Bob? Oh, sorry. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, okay, um, I just want to clarify, the, the, the one chart on the vehicle movement implies that you expect all trucks to come from the south and exit going north, is that right?
Well, that was, the, the vehicle movement that we did was just to show fire truck circulation site where it was entering from, um, excuse me, entering from the northbound lane and going around the building and, uh, just to, you know, make sure that they can maintain and get around the new addition.
Okay, so the big trucks that might bring cars onto the site, that they're going to follow the same paths? Could they come from the north? Uh. I'm just curious, how do, how do those big trucks get into the, into the site?
Eric or Mark, would you guys be able to respond to that, how the big trucks are currently, uh, dropping off cars on site or making deliveries?
Mark, uh, could you, could you comment on that since you're there, uh, every day?
Yeah, they, they, uh, enter, there's, it, it either stoplight on the, from, coming from the north or the south. And they could just pull in onto the parking lot. There's plenty of room. They don't have to go around the back of the building for, for dropping off cars.
Okay, so they, they can come in, uh, the north entrance or the south entrance?
Yes. At the stoplight.
They're both signalized, I believe, yes.
Correct.
Both signalized, yep. They are.
Alright, that's the only question we have.
Alright, thanks Bob. And Joan?
Okay, so with respect to the, this lot to the north, so that is gonna be part of the application, is that what? Eric, is that what you're saying? That it, it has to be part of the application?
Um, that's what I had thought, but I'm, now I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Okay, I, I was just wondering. I mean, cause if, if it, it is, then obviously they'll have to run down the, the origin of their use and, you know, and, and, and so forth, but, so I was just curious whether it has to be part of it or whether just you wanted to mention it for completeness of the review. I was just curious. But that was, that was my only issue at this point.
Alright, thanks Joan. I just wanna make the comment, you know, that the light further to the north is not their parcel, although they're currently leasing land there and using, having a lot of inventory on the, on the lot. When we you wanna make sure that the fire access is, is, uh, completely there. I mean, it's, it's always a very tight, uh, parked area. Make sure that the fire trucks can be accessed through there, show that. And we did discuss, you know, that, that nine-foot strip of land in front, uh, may become a sidewalk. DOT, you, you're gonna have to deal with DOT, I think, for the force main. That was, uh, brought up. So there's, uh, and they may
We will be working with the DOT for the force main connection, uh, with regarding this, you
I mean, say they may require a sidewalk as well, is what I'm saying, but, and we, we're, we've been getting sidewalks along that section of Route nine as, as much as possible.
We understand that, but unfortunately, we, there's only nine feet of room there between the, um, between curb line to curb line. We'd really like to, and it's grassed area. Right now, it's a green area. We'd rather not turn that into a sidewalk. It's on the DOT property, it's, it's
It's the DOT right away, right. That's, that's, and that's where they want sidewalks. So we'll, we'll have to see what they say about that as well.
Can I ask why is, what is the reluctance to put a sidewalk there? Just, do you wanna keep the green or?
We would like to keep the green. We would like to keep the green. There's not a lot of room there between the front of the building and that sidewalk. That building's already existing. So we're kinda stuck with, that's our spot to put display cars. Uh, we can't narrow that aisle anymore, and there's, uh, to put a sidewalk in the middle, to put a sidewalk through that nine-foot strip, that's, that's a significant amount of impervious coverage that we're adding.
I'd like to chime in, um, you know, we're in the car business. Uh, displaying of inventory is extremely important to our business, essential to our business. Uh, that front line of cars, uh, is, is very tight. And if anything is done that would, uh, cause us to eliminate, uh, cars on that front line, that would be, uh, ex, uh, extremely, uh, big problem for us.
Yeah, I don't think we want to, want to do that at all. Anything that was done there would have to fit within that, that buffer and on the DOT property. We would not want to impact it. You have enough, uh, problems with parking cars there already. The only other thing I think you wanna, whether you, I don't know if you're still in negotiations or not with, for how it's gonna work out, but it's right now, you got a lot of inventory on the leased land from Mr. Ginsburg, and I don't know what his, and he's got subsequent plans potentially for that whole air, for all the property he owns there. And, uh, at some point, you may, you may not be able to do inventory, or you may want to purchase land from him. And also on the south entrance there, there's, there was discussion a few years ago about a either a land swap or easement for him, him to access his property behind you at the light there, so I don't know if you have any comments on that, on those issues at this time?
Yeah, we, uh, and all I can say is that, um, you know, we've had communications with, uh, Ginsburg or representatives of Ginsburg and, um, you know, for years, and, uh, you know, I, I haven't really had, received a recent update on, uh, what their plans are. I, I
Okay.
My understanding has been that, that the plans have been stalled for quite some time, so.
Yeah, they've been kinda dormant, but, uh,
What's that?
They've been kinda dormant, it looks like, but we've gotta, you know, keep a look, you know, as a board, we gotta keep a lookout for what's gonna happen in the future as well. And if he decides to not lease you that land anymore, what happens to all your inventory, so.
Yeah, and then, you certainly, we would, um, cross that bridge and deal with that issue if, if indeed that happens. And certainly, uh, working with Ginsburg could be part of the solution.
Yep. And you're used, and you're using, losing about a dozen parking spaces as well in the back there by creating that building. Just to make that note. Alright, I think we're ready to move forward with lead agency at least and, and, uh, continue on. Nicole?
Could I ask one question or make one comment?
Sure.
The, uh, it came up earlier that the, um, property to the north was part of the application. Um, I, I really don't understand why it would be part of this, this application. We, uh, we rent property there. Uh, it, um, even prior to us owning it five years ago, or maybe longer, uh, excuse me, longer than that, I'm sorry. We've owned it since, uh, uh, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. It was used many years before that, uh, for storing cars. Uh, and nothing's changed. And so, uh, I'm not really sure, uh, why that would be part of this, uh, application.
I think the only issue I, uh, had, is what the issue I brought up is what do you do with your inventory if that does not be, you know, since it's not your land. I mean, Duke Pontiac is long gone, but, but, uh, they were the ones parking cars there originally. Alright, um, Nicole?
I move that the planning board declares intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as type one action. And authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to identified involved agencies.
Okay.
Moved in second. For lead agency, called a question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency. And subject to the following, respond to comments of the planning board and those reset from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, the following one through thirteen.
Second.
Moved in second. Called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero. Alright.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. We'll circulate
Happy holidays to you, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, too.
Next up is first student at Fitch Way. Who's, uh,
Hello?
representing that today?
Hi, Michelle Zerfus with Burger Engineering.
Hey, Michelle.
And also on this call is Michael Klein, the applicant.
Okay.
And and I can, I'll share my screen so that you can see. Basically, what this is, is it's a existing bus facility that has been here since, um, nineteen ninety-two. The site has been used for school buses, for students' school buses. So this is a, this is a long non-conforming use, and the uh, town planner asked that we come before you, prepare a plan and come before you. So the, the, the site is off of Creek Road. People come in through here. There's this parking up front for the office staff and other drivers that, well, not, uh, not necessarily drivers. Drivers can park where their buses are. They can park some there. Bus is in the back. There's a maintenance facility. And that, that's basically what it is. It's an existing site. And it's been existing since nineteen ninety-two.
Alright. Now, withstanding, it's, it's got some, uh, issues. You know, it's been existing. Alright, go to Eric for the recommendation of the
Sure. Let's see, the, uh, action tonight could be, um, oops. It could be either to, uh, uh, declares, well, there's no other in, agency, so the board could, could proceed or, or, or just defer. You have, you have the recommendation there. The, there's a few issues to discuss, and I think the board this afternoon received some correspondence from the neighbor. And just by the way, background, I know another member had asked me, you know, why, what, what prompted this to come to the planning board, and I'm aware, uh, I went, the zoning administrator apparently had had discussions over a fair period of time that I was not involved with, with regarding, um, by, potential violations because the bus use has existed without any town approvals. And so based on those discussions, they eventually, uh, came to the town with an application to resolve them. I don't know whether violations were ever issued or not. I think they were withheld pending the application, uh, but I'm not sure. I, I don't think it matters too much right now.
That is the case. Eric, that is the case.
Sorry?
That is the case, Eric.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's on, the application is for site plan and special use permit. Um, right now, the planning board is the only identified agency. It's unclear whether or not, there's a lot of information in the comments from staff and other places and, and other consultants. Uh, so I think we need more information on the plan before the board can do much about the operation and about the, the features that are there. I, probably the main one the board might wanna discuss tonight is that the site is zoned for I, IH industrial, heavy industry, uh, which does have setbacks and requirements, buffer requirements. Uh, there've been a lot of complaints from the residential use. The residential lots are also located in the heavy industrial district. Uh, but they are there, and the board is faced with an application to consider site plan and special use permit approval. So the, the applicant should at least s- spend some effort addressing, what would they propose to, as, um, to meet the buffer requirements or a partial waiver by the board? For that. And also, let's see. You still hear me? Sorry, my computer was just
Yep, you're still clear.
Okay. We also, just before the board meeting, um, I, I think that takes care of the staff comments. The rest are there, uh, for the board discussion and the applicant. I will add, before the engineer speaks, I did just before the meeting receive a letter from the board's wetland consultant, Aspen Environmental. I don't know if you had a chance to receive that, cause it was literally minutes before the meeting.
Have not seen.
Basically, uh, she said, indicated that, uh, the surveyed location of the wetland, uh, she is an accurate representation of the boundaries on the site. It is an Army Corps of Engineers slash town wetland as opposed to a DEC wetland, and should be indicated as such. The one hundred-foot that buffer boundary that's shown there, she thought was reasonable. According to the town's aquatic resource law. Um, there's a dirt parking area that does extend into the wetland buffer towards the creek. Uh, but it's about a twenty-five-hundred square foot area, which is below the one-tenth acre of disturbance. Uh, and so the use of this area is not in and of itself a regulated activity. So it, it doesn't appear to be contradictory to the Aquatic Resource Code. She did observe one of two cleanouts, she did observe two cleanouts indicate, on the, uh, in the buffer area, but there's no additional information, uh, about the origin of the discharge. Uh, and that pipe should be fully identified. Um, and she's available to meet with town staff as appropriate, um, going forward.
Alright. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Eric, Eric, can I explain some of that? She probably saw the town sewer line and holes that are within that buffer zone.
Uh, my conversation, she, she's familiar with the sewer line, cause she did some other work for the town in that area. And according to her, these were cleanouts, um, that are not associated with the sewer. At least not with the town sewer.
They all have to look into that.
And she said, one of them is marked, uh, one of the cleanouts is marked on the plan and one is not. And there's no pipe shown leading to it or from it, so it's unclear what they're for.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Sounds good. Alright, uh, Don, do you wanna weigh in at this point? There's it could be definitely
Sure, um, I, there's some, some concerns here. Um, I think the fact that there's bus parking in the, in the floodplain is something that the floodplain administrator for the town's gonna have to take a look at. Um, we are concerned about, you know, parking close to the fall kill and, and also parking on dirt and how that tracks, um, although I can say I don't think I've ever seen anything on Creek Road. Um, and we've got a number of other comments, but those are probably the main ones.
Alright, thanks, Don. Alright, let's go around the, the board for comments with this one. Uh, Peter?
Uh, honestly, I'm, I'm I'm kinda struggling to figure out why, we have a bus terminal located in an industrial zone, um, the heaviest, the, the level of intensity for industry that we have in the town. Are we doing this because the site plan was never approved for that use?
That's correct, yeah. I believe the zoning administrator, in response to a number of complaints over the years, had, uh, done some research on the site, um, and, uh, learned that there were no approvals, uh, for the use. Uh, there was no site plan and no special use permit, both of which are required by code. And, uh, so the, uh, there was communication between the zoning administrator and the applicant. Uh, and they agreed that if the applicant could come in with a site plan and special, and, and, and get a site plan and special use permit looked at, perhaps clean up some of the things on the site that are most objectionable. You know, to particularly the neighbors that, uh, maybe that, you know, would be a way to legalize the use. Um, and so, uh, to Eric's question earlier, my understanding is that there was no violation, uh, that has been, uh, actually made. But there certainly has been, uh, a lot of history of discussion back and forth. And it, and it's frankly, it's been about, I think about a year, um, that we've, uh, you know, waited to get, uh, the site plan application in. So this goes back to Lizette Tucker, our previous zoning administrator.
Great, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Alright. Let's see, Ben, you have anything?
Yeah, this is a, not just a bus facility for parking, but from what I understand, they also maintain and service the buses there. So I'd like to know more about how things are monitored and contained, like with waste oil and batteries and gas tanks and monitoring of the gas tanks. Do we know how many gas and gas tanks and monitoring of the gas tanks. Do we know how many gas tanks are there? Are they steel, are they fiberglass? Are there pumps, dispensers? What kind of fire suppression system is there? I mean, there's a lot of things involved with not just parking buses, but maintaining them too.
I can, there's a, they have a bulk petroleum storage permit. So they, they have permission to store the, for all the tanks and everything they have on site. They've got the state, state approval for that.
That's for the tanks?
For the tanks, for the fueling. They have a bulk storage, bulk petroleum storage permit.
Okay, is that all in, in the application? I mean, do we, does the planning board have access to that information?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, Ben, I, this is Don, I can address that a little bit. There's, according to the information they provided, there's one ten thousand gallon fiberglass storage tank buried underground. Think that was a nineteen nineties tank. And then there's four, four or five gallons, four or five smaller, like five hundred, five fifty gallon tanks that are above grade. It's not clear to me whether there's containment on any, any of them at this point. So, but we do know that she, I mean, she is correct, they, they have a petroleum bulk storage permits from DEC. So truly, I mean, yeah, we, we can look into it further if she can provide more information for us, but that's what we know so far.
Don, how, how old did you say that ten thousand gallon underground tank is?
Michelle, maybe you remember exactly, but I think it was around, it was in the nineties somewhere.
Yeah, I would, I don't have that immediately in front of me, I can get that information.
About, about twenty-five years, I think somewhere in there.
Okay, Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Nicole, your comments?
The, the only thing that I really had was the concerns of these buses possibly going onto other people's properties and possibly damaging their, their properties. So I think I wanted some more information on that from the applicant and see what they had to say.
So this, so this is Michael Klein with First Student. Thanks for your all's time today, or tonight. And, and in regards to the buses transversing over our, our neighbor's property and other people's property. We, and Monica, Monica is also on the call, she is our local location manager. And I believe that there have been some issues in regards to our, our neighbor there in regards to the buses going into some of her property. We have, we have received a, a, a lawsuit in regards to that and a settlement has been arranged in order to repair the road that we co-inhabit. Monica, do you have anything to expand on that?
No, not really. That's exactly what's happening, that there is negotiations that have taken place to come to a settlement for repairs and concessions to the neighbor.
So, so with that being said, we, we are before, before the board here, knowing that, yes, there is some concessions already that have been settled with the neighbor, but we are also willing to address any other issues that obviously the town has in regards to getting our full approval to be at the site, knowing that this use has been, this use at least since the nineteen, since the nineteen ninety-two letter that we received that, that technically we've never formally submitted for an approval. And obviously, this was a company, the Safe Tran Company, school bus company, that we've acquired over the years. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yep. Does the settlement, are there items that would end up needing to show up on the site plan that would come out of the settlement that you're talking about? You know?
We, we can make that indication or note on that site plan what that settlement has, has resulted in. I believe there's a repair for half of the road, which I believe is co-owned. Monica, correct me if I'm wrong, but co-owned by our neighbor, our neighbor and ourselves or our, the owner of the property, which would be the Fitchets.
Correct, the, the owner of the property.
So, so we have taken upon ourselves to repair those issues. And I believe that's all that was agreed to at this point in time, but we will be sure to put that, those notes, those comments on the site plan as needed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe looking at, I don't know if there's landscaping or something that can be done or whatever, whatever else. I mean, I guess you have an easement across their properties based on what I'm seeing in the property lines on partial access. Anything else, Nicole? You're right.
No, thank you.
Rocco?
Nothing at this time. I'll wait for the seeker, thank you.
And Bob?
Nothing additional from me right now.
Joan?
Nothing, just, just for clarification, did you say that that settlement agreement is finalized and the litigation concluded?
I believe it is. Go ahead, Monica.
It's, it's not yet, but it is very close to conclusion.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Joan. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I just had a question on the, the parcel lines on your, on your site plan don't seem to line up with what's on partial access. Am I missing something there?
Partial access is very inaccurate. If you look like in the city, because you'll see part, parcel lines that run right down the middle of buildings.
I know, it's, it's off, off a little bit, but there's an ex, you know, it looks like you're, you're, you have a parcel line going right straight east to west in the middle of the...
That's, that's actually a deed line, it's written in the deed. Yeah, it's not, it's, it's in the deed, but it doesn't actually represent a splitting of the property. It's something that's in the deed and therefore it's put on the plan.
It's a deed line, but not the...
I think you're talking about that line down the middle.
Yes.
That kind of splits.
Okay, it looked like it was dividing it into two parcels.
Right, it kind of is going almost between the two, the existing properties and that, that's just actually something that showed up in the deed. And it was put on for that reason, but it doesn't, it's not a property line, it's not, not anything that's other than just a paper type thing.
All right.
Michelle, or, or maybe to the board, so that you're aware. It's my, are you, one thing I've done is that this application does not yet have an owner, assigned owner consent.
I see, I thought that had come in. I thought that had gotten fed, extended, delivered, but I...
Yes, Eric, this, this is Michael Klein. And, and, and the, the owner, the Pritchets, their legal counsel apologizes for the delay in getting those affidavits and consent forms over to us. He hopes to have those by tomorrow, which we will send directly into the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Something else that arrived?
All right. The other thing I noticed, there's on the north end of the property, there's a house that's literally falling apart. What's the status of that and is it going to be taken down or? You know, the roof, the roof has caved in and...
Yeah, that, we're, we're, we're still in discussions on that.
You what?
We'll, we'll respond to that with the next...
The next, the middle, okay, you're gonna, you're investigating what to do with that?
Yes.
All right, and as, as our town engineer had mentioned, there's, you know, there's a lot of parking on, on dirt toward the Fall Hill Creek or grass, I don't know what's, it's a mix of everything back there, but you gotta address, you know, make sure there's no erosion going into the creek. Maybe whether it's some item four or whatever. I don't think we want to do any paving or anything here to make it impervious, but we want to make sure it's stable, that you're, what's, whatever you're parking on is stable.
Yes, it, it's dirt, but it, you call it dirt, it's actually, you know, kind of got this little grass cover over it that they just park on. That's not driven on all that much, it's just more like overflow storage.
Okay.
So it's pretty well stabilized, it's been there for quite a while.
I'll just take a look, you know, I'm sure our, our town engineer will look into that as well when he looks at the SWIP and such. But that's a concern. Uh, let's see, what else do I have on my list? I guess, you know, the other main thing is the neighbor complaints and, and you say you're, you're working to address some of that, so it's a tough situation with, you know, it's a, you got topography issues and is there any way that the buses can be rerouted to not go past on that northern driveway?
No, no, there's not. And you might want to check when the neighbor moved in.
All right. That's all for now then. Go ahead, Nicole.
I move that the planning board determine that this application is incomplete for seeker classification and review.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, a few, few things to look at and get back to us in the next to middle, but...
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, thank you.
Carl, this is Eric, you might, do you want to consider there's a second resolution to defer with conditions to have the board, have the applicant respond?
Yes, yes. We do want to respond to the conditions I...
It was a resolution to defer action subject to comments. Do you see, they're on that same page?
You want me to also defer? Is that what you're saying?
I think it would be advisable.
To, to, to address the comments, yep, we have, we've been making a lot of comments tonight, but...
Okay, I move that the planning board defer further action on this application as incomplete for seeker review and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, the following one through eleven.
Second. Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, Eric. All right, take care, guys.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas, happy, happy holidays.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Same to you. Happy holidays.
Good luck with the snow around the buses. Okay, we've got some time extensions. First up, Shady Brook Trailer Park. I move that the planning board grant two ninety day time extensions of conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval from December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty forward to June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Rocco, I mean, Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Eastdale Village Lot Line Revision between lots ten WA and ten WB. I move that the planning board grant one ninety day time extension of conditional lot line revision approval from December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty forward to March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Last agenda item is Stratford Farm Town Houses. I move that the planning board grant two ninety day time extensions of site plan approval and a final major subdivision approval forward, from January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one forward to July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth, sorry. Missed that correction.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Does any, any board members have anything else to bring up, any other business?
Yeah, I, I want, Ben, I don't want you going overboard on my Christmas present this year. Like you did last year.
I get so much joy.
That's all.
Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
I'd like to give a shout out to the highway department for their handling of the snowstorm, they did a great job.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, congrats to Mark, he's got a big job with a storm like this that we had, so that's, that's great. All right.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
But be well, be safe, happy holidays. See you next year.
First, I move that we terminate the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question, anybody, call in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Enjoy.
Happy holidays.
See you in twenty twenty-one.